Hello everybody and welcome to the Public Sector Sales Podcast. My name is James and today we're talking about a topic that is grabbing headlines and sparking imagination across government. That is the rapid development of AI and especially what it means for local government. It probably hasn't escaped many of you that over the last few years, AI has seen a remarkable development in its abilities. Over the last 48 hours, for example, ChatGPT 4O was released alongside Google's Gemini 1.5. And this rapid development has not been lost on local government especially. Tussle data shows that in 2023, the value of contracts related to AI increased in value by a staggering 1,000% versus 2022. So that's not even taken into account 2024 so far. To help us make sense of what this all means and what it especially means for local government, I have the pleasure of being joined by Sarah Penya, Head of Emerging Technology at Swindon Borough Council. Thank you very much for joining us today. Before we get going, could you please give a bit of an introduction to yourself and what you do at Swindon?
Absolutely. I started the emerging technology team at Swindon around five years ago. And our purpose is to identify, explore, experiment and evidence where emerging technology can make a real impact on the business and importantly, the town and communities that we serve.
Fantastic. I'm especially excited to be talking today, Sarah, because you've been spearheading several very innovative and very successful projects that have been utilizing sort of new capabilities of artificial intelligence, especially generative AI for both Swindon but also now of a worldwide implication as well, which we'll touch on very soon. So this conversation is all about artificial intelligence, what it is and sort of what the implications of it might be for local government, especially how a local government might adopt AI-based solutions, potential opportunities there, but also the risks as well and sort of what considerations need to be taken as part of any AI-based implementation. So before we get going into the conversation, as I said, this is a very pertinent topic. Lots of people are talking about it, but to kind of clarify before we get going, what exactly is it we mean by artificial intelligence? And especially sort of what do we mean by generative AI, the kind of topic that's really taken your headlines recently? What do we mean by that?
Artificial intelligence is a really big field and within there are lots of subcategories. So we know that generative AI is the thing that's capturing everyone's attention right now, but we should really remember and make use of all the other branches of AI. And some of the examples of that would be machine learning, for example. So we have algorithms that can learn from data, identify patterns, make predictions and improve performance over time. So that's really good if we think about something like social care and falls in older people and whether we can see identifying areas where we could look at predicting that earlier and helping people with preventative models. We have deep learning, which was inspired by the structure of the brain. So that looks at things like computer vision, natural language processing. We did our first piece of artificial intelligence work here five years ago on the very inspiring fly tipping. And we use computer vision. We asked our community to send in a photograph when they found fly tipping. And that goes through computer vision and it identifies what's in that fly tip. So if there are 50 items, what are those things? So it sees that. And from there, we can then, for example, prioritize how we respond. So if within there, there is drug paraphernalia and that's near a primary school, because we have the location data, then we can say, hey, this is something that we need to get on top of immediately. Whilst a dumped mattress, not very nice, may have a less priority when we go and collect it. We have things like natural language processing. So that's the interaction between computers and human language. So it understands the meaning and we can use that for things like translation. And at Swindon, we've done some work on translation, so we'll maybe touch on that later. And then there's things like expert systems, which emulate the decision-making and ability of human expertise. And that more at the moment is in the field of medical, where people might use those expert systems to look at scan data and start identifying and predicting medical conditions from that.
You've touched on a lot of examples already there on how artificial intelligence is being used across local government for different sort of ends. What are the core problems in your opinion that or core issues that artificial intelligence, especially nowadays, can assist local governments in addressing, in your opinion?
So I think the core areas and the one that we're seeing a lot is around efficiency and cost reduction. I think definitely there's misconception at the moment around generative AI and that cashable savings bit. So there's something there that I would ask leaders really think about. Because when we look at generative AI and we look at how that helps with efficiency and productivity, typically that's a proportion of benefit rather than a cashable savings piece. And I think there's some misconception around that. So AI for efficiency and cost reduction is great, but maybe not think that generative AI is the silver bullet for cashable savings and to look at some of those other branches as well. I think improved decision-making, when I mentioned around social care earlier, we're looking at things like preventing falls or we're looking at maybe indicators of people we can help earlier to take a more preventative approach. Or we look at how we organize our planning and infrastructure, all that rich data that we have, as long as that's in good quality. And that's really, really important for artificial intelligence, that it's not just about having the data. It's about having really good quality data, but that will help with our improved decision-making. There's something around enhanced citizen engagement that we've seen for a while now with things like chatbots and the like. All those, those have moved on from that traditional chatbot style that maybe we have familiar in our head through to now AI-driven chatbots, which are far more intelligent around how they search for items. Then things like predictive maintenance. So you can, for example, have data running through radio frequency sensors that are attached to areas that allow us to look at when something's going to need work. That might be, for example, the jennella's testing or water flow and water temperature. And then you've got, again, computer vision linked through to various camera elements, whether that's drones or something similar. And that can help with things like public safety.
Yeah, it's pretty staggering just of the wide diversity of things that artificial intelligence can help with. So I wanted to touch on Swindon as an excellent case study of how local government has been utilizing artificial intelligence. As you've been behind and spearheading multiple sort of very innovative projects utilizing artificial intelligence that have had both excellent implications for Swindon but also now sort of a worldwide implication as well. So especially your work using AI for developing easy read documents. Could you give us a bit of a story of where that began, sort of what the process for developing that looked like and kind of what the end result of that project's been?
Absolutely. So we did some work on translating documents into different languages. And that was around a year beforehand. One of the directors in adult social care said to me, it would be fantastic if we could translate things into easy read. And I said, tell me more about that. So she shared some information with me and I thought that generative AI looked like something that would be a good approach for this type of thing and ran some very quick tests, probably about half an hour and said, hey, have a look at this, what does that look like? And she's like, I think this looks really good. And I said, I do too, let's, let's, let's start looking at this. And I was introduced to a wonderful group of people in Swindon within our community who have learning disabilities of all different ranges and levels and asked whether they would join me or my team and could we work together to create something that would produce easy read accessible information, not only for them, but also wider than them ideally. So I had big ambition upfront with this one to really break barriers because these individuals need information in a way that they can understand so that they can make choices and decisions about their lives. So we spent and continue to spend time with them. I was with them last week, but we began to work with them once a week to understand how information was difficult for them and what would make it easier. And I began to understand from the business, how is that done right now? What does it cost? How long does it take? And it was really obvious that to do this took a really long time and cost a lot of money. If we look at getting an external service to help us, it takes one to two weeks and it costs about £120 per A4 page and you get about five short sentences and five images. If we get our social work team to do that, it takes them hours. But those hours are then not spent supporting the people that really is where the high value of their job is. So creating a first that would do this in a technical way would be incredible to breaking barriers and really helping millions of people worldwide, not only that have a learning disability, but might have a low literacy level, might not have English as their first language, might have a cognitive impairment, acquired brain injury, so many people that we could support. So I worked with our learning disability community. We had volunteers that said, yes, we'd love to work with you on this. I paid for them, they're in my team, same as any other member of my team. And we worked together on understanding all the things that they found challenging when they receive information and all the things that were important. And we created a product that they have called Simply Readable. That now produces easy read information for our social work practitioners. It takes them about 15 minutes now to produce an easy read for the people that they support. Generative AI does the majority of the work. They have the responsibility to review that. They can make amendments where they need to, make sure it's suitable for the person that they're working with. It can also produce generative AI images. What was important for people with learning disabilities is that they have representation. So they have images of people that look like them that help them understand the context of the text that's being used to describe the information. And so that now takes around 15 minutes and it costs about a penny per page. So it's an incredible turnaround. It's still really early days, the product is very, very fresh. We open sourced that worldwide licence free, so anyone can get this at no cost. And we did that around the end of January. So we continue to work with our group. We're continuing to expand how we use it at the council. And we're talking to and have spoken to so many other people who are beginning to trial it and utilize it in lots of different ways, more than we'd ever imagined.
That's excellent. So for councils who want to embark on kind of similar projects, what kind of were the key lessons that you learnt through developing that piece of software, that end-to-end project? Alongside the other projects you guys have done, for example, the translate software as well? What kind of have been your key takeaways that you'd want to impart to other local authorities, other procurement teams before they went on their own journey as well?
One of the things that we have in emerging technology is a really valuable ecosystem that I've built over time, that contains others within the public sector across all areas. Some people across central government as well, lots of people in industry and academia. So through that ecosystem, we're able to help leverage expertise. That's really important. So I would definitely say to others looking to do work within the AI space that there's a wonderful wealth of people that have great skills and experience and that they can help you grow. So where you have a great ecosystem and you have people that you work with who have that partnership style, what that can do is you can co-create the work, which is what we've done. So we have a partner supplier that has worked alongside us. That means my team can further grow their skills. That gives us a really kind of robust and scalable model at Swindon that enables us to keep doing more. So in terms of that skills acquisition, it's hugely important. And the other thing that was important in this piece, in all the pieces we've done, is working with the people that the product is for. So without having those experts by experience of a learning disability working as part of my team, the product wouldn't be as good as it is today because it's been a reflection of all the things that they've told us around. And it's all different things. Sometimes it's things like, oh, Sarah, please, please in simply readable, can we make sure that we don't have words that mean more than one thing? Because sometimes I don't know both meanings and then that can be confusing for me. Sometimes it will be, oh, can I have extra spacing between the words? Because it's easier for me to read if there's extra spaces. So all those things, you know, as a, as a technical team, as a local authority and people that don't sit in the shoes of the individual, even though we might try our best, we don't know that. So the richness for all of the pieces of work we do is through connecting very closely and regularly with the people that we are producing this for in order to get the highest quality return.
So it's important to not be siloed when you're developing these things is to remember both other people are developing similar things. So you can be talking to them, learning from each other, but also don't lose sight of ultimately who you're producing this for.
Absolutely, absolutely. And also there's this thing around, I don't know, build versus buy as well. So with simply readable, we chose to go down the build route. But we did do that in partnership with a supplier where we have a really good relationship. But we wanted to build that, we had a great community and we had my team to work with. There is another piece that we've been working on recently, where we spent a few weeks looking at the potential of building that and said, do you know, this is going to take such a lot of our resource. It's actually more complex as you get deeper into it. So let's go look to the market. So, you know, we did that quite quickly, that assessment around, in that particular case, it's best to go out and see, see what's available, yeah.
So to help reiterate just sort of the impact that these projects have had, we were discussing before we started recording, how a lot of authorities worldwide have taken interest in your recent projects. Could you talk a bit more about that? You don't have to name names obviously, but give a bit of context to that.
Yeah, absolutely. So the translation solution, which is the earlier piece we did, is being utilized worldwide. So the Welsh government are using it as their dual language piece for Welsh and English for everything that they need to do. Edinburgh have recently released, I think last week, the results case study from them implementing it there. And I'm aware that there are many other councils using it too. We even helped a nearby authority with some urgent support during a big evacuation plan. So it's also really useful in terms of that speed of response and assistance as well. Broader than that, it's being used across France, it's being used throughout other areas in Europe. United Arab Emirates, I've spoken to, I know Latin America. And I'm having conversations at the moment with Australia and New Zealand. And we're looking at the potential of picking that up further and looking at what we can do to scale more in terms of simply readable. It's had so much interest and there are so many people kind of beginning to pick up what isn't a really new solution and utilize it. So we have some central government departments that have neurodiverse groups and that they think that would be really useful. We have a worldwide charity that's looking at using it for a completely different use case. And that's across Africa, South East Asia and Latin America. We have UK kind of national banks that we're talking to around the potential of using it within the finance sector. Lots of charities, from small disability charities through to very large, well-known charities that help people who are older or help people that have degenerative conditions. So yeah, the, the scale and breadth of interest is incredible. And it's amazing how, you know, Swindon is, you know, my team is a team of three, we're not big. So it's incredible how a really small team with some support from a supplier and with support from our community can look at achieving what is a trailblazing first. It's the first product to market. This is all done manually right now. And to see the impact of that and to see how it helps people in a really tangible way is, yeah, it's incredible.
It's pretty amazing just to see how widely, how wide the interest is in all of this. I think it is testament also to just how much of a step changer it has been perhaps in the thinking of government recently, the last few years to say, this is an area, a field which has real potential for public services. On that especially, so let's say you're a local authority or public contracting authority of some sort and you're thinking, okay, I think there's, we can be doing something with artificial intelligence in whatever sort of guise or form that might be. What does the process look like from sort of having that idea to actually sort of then getting to the stage where it's starting to develop something? So for example, there's the debate around whether you develop it in-house or whether you outsource it, you go to the market, you go to tender, whatever. Based on your projects that you've developed, what sort of guidance or recommendations would you give to councils or any public body about whether to decide to do that in-house or look to the market, for example?
We do a little bit of both. But even where we build, we tend to do it in some partnership style. So that's really great in terms of skills and capacity building and giving us a scalable, robust, robust model. Internal capacity is something that we need to think hard about when we're thinking about whether we kind of buy or build. Do we have enough skilled staff, particularly in these very kind of brand new emerging areas and resources in order to do this kind of development? The complexity of the solution, you know, are we looking to do something fairly straightforward and simple? Or is it very complex and requiring very specialized knowledge? There may be time constraints. It may be something that we want to work on a pace. And if that's the case, then it may be that going out to buy and to utilize, looking at the market is really important. And again, there's the cost there. And when we think about the cost, we need to be mindful around things like long-term maintenance as well. So not just that kind of upfront piece, but the longevity of supporting that solution. And then also within that, as you mentioned right at the beginning, there's all the change and it's evolving, you know, hour on hour at the moment. So we also need to consider when we develop, whether we're doing that in a future-proofed way. And again, there's something around that buy piece where that's very much, you know, typically baked in. But if we're going to do that ourselves, we need to be mindful that, for example, with our easy read piece, we've chosen a route that allows us to access a number of different AI models. So we happen to be using two within the solution at the moment. But it may be that in that underlying area of choice, something else starts developing more at pace and helps meet our needs better. And so that would enable us to maybe then look at changing that choice of model behind the scene. And again, that gives us that kind of longevity and that ability to maintain with, with the scale of where things are going.
So that was going to be my follow-up question actually. Like you said, it's day by day, this technology is changing. So to ensure the councils don't quickly become outdated in the technology that they're developing, so your recommendation would be to ensure that the service provider you're going to is sort of, what would you say to councils to ensure that they're not quickly getting sort of behind the times as it were?
Absolutely, yeah, technical stack. I think we can always do our best. I don't think there's ever a kind of magical answer to this one. With the generative AI, like I said, that we've been using, we're going to a service provider that allows choice of model. And that choice of model is growing all the time. And so we're using two of those models right now, but we can at least look at how those grow. We can choose to change those if we see a marked improvement in another area. So there's something there around looking at modular capability that allows you to make that kind of switch decision. But also it allows you to then look at building further and scaling further, which is something my team, we always think about upfront, is not just the product that we're working on, but actually where else can that go either vertically or horizontally through feature or applicability? So everyone at Swindon knows my favorite word is extensibility. I did have a few questions early on as to whether it was a proper word. I don't know, but it's there now and it's embedded here.
It's embedded.
There's something here about, don't just think about the individual area that you're working on at that moment in time. And a really good example of that is we have built our easy read solution on top of our translate solution. And the reason we've done that is because I said, hey, we will have people in our community who need easy read in another language. And actually, the interface for the translation needs to be really similar to what we need for simply readable. So let's not rework a whole new solution. Let's utilize similar features that we've already got in a modular way. Add this new service on to connect through to generative AI, but then couple them together to then add power to each of the solutions. So there's something around, yeah, maybe modular design and thinking really creatively about where this can go and what we can do with it.
So digging into that, let's say, for example, this imaginary procurement team decides to go to market to develop some kind of AI-based solution. As you said, if the supplier is offering that kind of modular angled for offering that stuff in there plus, what other factors would you recommend for a procurement team's contracting authority to look to in potential suppliers when deciding who should they opt to go for? What are the kind of other green flags, as it were?
Yeah, I think, I mean, obviously with the new procurement act, there's some strength there around upfront engagement. So we always, you know, actively keep our ecosystem doing, going. And we have lots of kind of pre-procurement conversations. I think that's really helpful. Track record and experience is always a green flag, but you know, we are talking AI and there are companies growing as fast as technology is growing too. And it's nice to be able, you know, in my team particularly, where we're looking at an experimentation space and how that can positively impact the town, the community, the business. There is something there around having an improved risk balance and actually looking to work with SMEs as well. And one that we've recently put in that's currently, it's been in a couple of weeks and we're assessing how that's working right now, is where I've gone out to market. There are only two people in the market that can do what we need and one of those stood out. But it's a very, very new SME. But you know, there's something for councils and procurement to have a more risk balanced position, particularly when we think about AI. So you know, we can look at track record and experience, but we need to have a good risk balance. We need to look at that scalability. There's something really huge around security and ethics. We hear it all the time, it's massively important. In government, we have it baked in everywhere, but don't forget about that. With our work, we also look at what's called unintended consequences. So we could do scanning around the potential unintended consequence of what we're looking to do. So not necessarily for the procurement piece, but I would say that that should be thought about probably pre-procurement. We need to look at things like implementation and support. So when we say that these are very new skills and we think about needing to adapt that or support that, we need to be able to look at that as part of procurement. And then we need to, of course, look at, you know, typically as we would also do, things like financial position, particularly if it's maybe a develop piece, because you need that confidence of completion.
So let's, let's fast forward a bit. Let's imagine all those factors have been taken into consideration, a supplier's been chosen, the project's been ongoing, finally sort of reached fee of go live, as it were. During the tools implementation phase, what would be your recommendations to councils? What kind of things should they be bearing in mind during that phase? So for example, should there be an element of trial periods, for example? Like what were the kind of ethical considerations that should be baked into that? What would your advice be implementing those tools?
So our team specifically... So our team specifically runs proof of concept pieces of work. So we're looking at new and emerging technologies. And within that, we need to assess the suitability, but we also need to think about, you know, security and ethics and unintended consequences and evidencing whether there is benefit and investment. So I think our model works really well because we work at pace. We tend to go from conversation to on the ground within three months. We are evidencing throughout that whole period, how does this look in terms of productivity, in terms of time, in terms of cost? And whatever the other agreed measures quality is normally there as a kind of qualitative piece. It also, through your proof of concept, allows you to ongoingly look at that security piece, to look at the ethical consequence scanning. So it gives you a building area of trust and evidence. And then you can say, right, here's the results of that few months. And there are really good clear indicators here that this is going to be of significant benefit for the organisation. And then that allows you to take a lower risk, higher confidence investment decision into the wider term. So I think the way in which our team works, it allows us to provide the right experimental and evidence space. But then we're able to then kind of go in and scale up beyond that quite fast. I would definitely recommend that's, that's a good model to use in this type of area.
So for, for councils that are listening to this and are very excited, you know, they've heard about what a fantastic world you guys have been doing, the potential of artificial intelligence to, as you said, increase productivity, to sort of improve citizen services. If we take the lens back a bit, artificial intelligence as a tool, it's not going to be appropriate in all contexts. So what would you, how would you sort of temper that excitement, as it were? Sort of where would you say artificial intelligence, things like generative AI are not appropriate for local government? Or not appropriate in the current sort of format and the kind of current capabilities of the technology?
With artificial intelligence, I think, especially with, you know, so much going on, it's easy to get on the hype scale around it. We mentioned at the beginning, I mentioned at the beginning around generative AI and cashable savings. And at the moment, we know that councils have, you know, a number of constraints around demand and financial pressures. So we need to be careful that we don't see AI as a constant cashable saving piece, because that isn't necessarily the case. It's meant to augment our human capability. So it's there to sit alongside us and help us. You know, there are definitely things where we can use that augmented capability, but we do need human oversight. And it's really not suitable for where we need that kind of empathetic engagement. So for example, you know, where we have our social care workers, we wouldn't be, you know, having it there, making a decision about the care that someone would receive or, you know, and so on and so forth. So, you know, it might be able to help take their conversational notes. And that means that their high value time is spent supporting the people that really need them. It might help them create accessible information so that they can better support those individuals. But there's a number of areas where, you know, AI is not the right thing to use. But there's a balance there. So there's opportunity in terms of cashable, there's something there about, don't think it is all that. It's intended purposely to support us. It's there as an assistant. I know we hear it quite a lot at the moment in terms of it's there as an assistant, but it is, you know, in our work, you know, people are there reviewing that, providing oversight. So what it's doing is taking away or performing that eighty twenty piece for them, but that, that capability remains. And it wouldn't be made for those kind of high ethical decision-making pieces, all those, you know, kind of empathetic service pieces. But there is so much it can do.
I think the decision-making angle is especially interesting. It kind of touches on the kind of ethical considerations of artificial intelligence. So if citizens, for example, knew that a lot of key strategies or decisions are being made by some artificial intelligence software system, I don't know how that would land of a lot of people, they'd think that's not appropriate, but you know, sort of what are the inputs for that decision being? It's all just edited into this black box, we don't know what's been going on. So its current sort of format or capabilities, touching on what you said already, what is the role for artificial intelligence today in decision-making? So where is it appropriate, where is it not? What kind of decisions?
So, yeah, so the machine learning model I was talking about earlier, where we have our own data, where that data is of good quality, that's absolutely where it can help us look at patterns, predictions and help inform decision-making. It's not making the decisions, but it helps inform our decision-making. Where we have, for example, generative AI, we need to be much more careful about knowing where did that underlying data come from? Does it have the right representation across our community representation? It will contain bias because we all, you know, whether we like it or not, that has grown within each of us over time. And so, you know, those models there, we need to make sure that we understand the traceability of that. And that's more now where I would say, you know, we shouldn't be using that. And we need to make sure that there's explainability behind that. Now, yes, we are using generative AI, but we're using it with engineering prompts that we've developed. It's within our data, we don't, that's private to us, it, it's not utilised within the model. The model that we have sat behind is specifically by an ethical research company. And so, you know, there's, there's a higher level of confidence there, but we still have people check it. It's not actually making decisions. But the, the machine learning piece and the deep learning piece, where that's on our quality contained data and it's learnt from our representation data for informing is, is good.
On that kind of confidence piece, how is it that Swindon, for example, or how would you recommend that councils communicate to citizens about what's sort of, how you're utilising artificial intelligence? Both in how you're using it today and potentially how it might be used in the future? How do you give citizens and residents for confidence that this is being used appropriately and ethically? Where's the data come from? Again, sort of what role is it playing in the decision-making process? Sort of what does that communication look like? What does it sound like?
A really good example of this is we utilised drones and computer vision for looking at roofing inspections on social housing. And I knew that that would make some people really uncomfortable in terms of drones flying over their properties. And so there's a lot of work we need to do on the governance and making sure that we're sitting in an assured position. And within that, that we share that with our communities and that we have conversations with our communities and that we have openness. And in that particular case, we chose an opt-in method. We published all of our governance information. We had our tenant liaison groups engage in cafes and with individuals within their social housing communities to talk to them about what we were doing all the way through. We did a number of questionnaires, a number of on-the-ground engagements. They got to fly the drones, they got to see how it looked and felt. We, we made sure that everybody was trained, even though we didn't have to do that. We knew that that would bring a higher level of confidence. We chose not to store any imagery, so we're doing a real-time view. Nothing is stored. Again, that gives levels of reassurance. It's opt-in, signage is out, people's doors are not, hey, this is what we're doing. So we've, with each of the pieces that we've done, we have engaged with our communities all the way through. And we have that transparency of what we're doing and how we're doing it. None of the artificial intelligence pieces we're doing have decision-making in them. So we're all so really clear about that.
It's all about transparency, ensuring it's crystal clear, sort of the objective, what the data's going to be used for. And as you said, that abilities of us or citizens to decide if they want to take part, if they want to be a part of this, essentially.
Yeah, and we give them that opportunity to engage with us throughout. So we don't talk to them at the end and say, hey, by the way, we've done this thing. We talk to them at the beginning, we want to do this thing, this is what it looks like, this is the approach we're going to take. How do you feel about that? If you have any concerns, you can come and talk to us. If you want to see what that look like, looks like, come, you know, we're arranging these sessions. So I think that we have built a model for Swindon that works well because it's very much about co-creation with the people of Swindon. We don't just kind of go off and do things and then let them know later on. And I think that makes a massive difference, that communication and engagement piece and listening to people's concerns and being able to say, that's great. We thought that might be something that would be difficult, which is why we're doing this. Yeah, I think that's important.
I think that's a very useful model for authorities to take. It kind of, it ties into the whole purpose of this conversation, I suppose, is to help teach or inform other local authorities about how they might use artificial intelligence, what the process for implementing that looks like. How can local authorities help other local authorities to implement this kind of solution? So for example, the role of sharing knowledge and principles and things like that, what does that kind of, what does that look like for you?
There are so many ways authorities can help each other out. And it's a topic I've started to add a bit of fire to over the last week or so. In that I am energised to have a go at creating a repository of proven delivery with proven benefits that we can tangibly share for replicating. And that doesn't mean everyone's going to see exactly the same benefits, because it depends where your baseline and start point is. But it is that ability to say, hey, we've done that thing through us with this supplier. This is how we did that, where we use that, these are the benefits that we've seen and this is how you could redo that. So I think there's definitely something there that we can do more. It, it's strange, local government has lots of pockets of its own mini communities where they, where they do talk to each other. So, you know, we can leverage that. I think we can do showcasing and talking and sharing that information. Potentially, we can do skill sharing. You know, we at Swindon in my team have had incubator opportunities where people can come in, learn skills and then take them back out again. So I think there are so many ways where we can help each other out in terms of if we are doing that build piece ourselves. Try and go through the open source route people and make it available to everybody else, because that's really nice. Share what we've done that has succeeded, participate in community groups. Government, if we think about it, is the biggest business in the world. Everyone is our customer. So there's something there and we're in a non-competitive environment. So there's something there about collaboration, sharing and working together to help apply what works well.
So touching on that open source part especially, one of the sort of very interesting features of the two projects, the Translate and the Easy Reads projects you're working on, as you've made both of them open source. What are the benefits you've seen as a result of making it open source? And what would you maybe say to other councils who maybe develop some similar projects and they're mulling over whether they should also make open source? What would tempt them to do that for you?
Open source for me is a real game changer across government. It allows us to help each other out. We are the biggest business in the world, everyone is our customer. We have a number of constraints and we're not in a competitive environment. So for me, open sourcing very much feels like, you know, we can be in this together. And if I've done something that works well here, why would I not share that with my fellow peers? And similarly, someone else then cannot be working on the same thing I am. They can choose something else to work on and they can contribute back. So I would hope that this open source community can start to build a number of solutions that become shareable, where we're able to support each other, where we're in this non-competitive environment. And we're providing, you know, typically more than 700 different types of services. So there's lots to do. It's also meant that in the case of these two, we're helping lots of, for example, smaller charities. Now, they may not have an IT team that can go and take down the open source, install it, et cetera, et cetera. So one of the things that this has also done, interestingly, is provided small commercial opportunities to SMEs to provide that service. My team is a small team of three. We are focusing on a number of things at any one time for our communities. It's not something we would be able to do. So that, you know, kind of puts back into the economy piece as well. And I think that that's a really good thing and there's commitment within that, where that's done on a, you know, fair and reasonable basis. But it means as well that people that maybe wouldn't have the skill to do this themselves are able to get that done for them at really low costs. So open source for me is, you know, we're helping each other out. We're, we're not creating a charge basis for that. But actually, within that grows some economy in itself, but we're doing it in a really sustainable and thought-out way. And, and yeah, I think that it's something that local government could contribute to a hub of open source and grow that.
I think it'll be extremely interesting to see how other authorities, how central government, local government, take these sort of open source projects as sort of a baseline and see over years sort of how they develop these, what kind of new things emerge from that. And it wraps up nicely into my final question. Where do you see AI, artificial intelligence, generative AI in local government? What role is it playing in the local government by the end of the decade or even by this time next year, based on the rate that we're talking about?
It's incredible, isn't it?
Yeah, what's your predictions?
In the short term, I think we'll continue to see small pilot projects and small use cases, both on the build and buy side. That will gain valuable insights, sharing and help share future implementation. There's still the ethics, security and governance piece going on quite strongly. There's really good things coming out of our bodies for government around people like the LJ and SOC Tim. We've got the Alan Shering Institute and a number of others as well. I think people are still figuring their way through that. And so at the moment, these small-scale pieces, I think are what we'll, you know, continue to see in the short term. The really transformative piece around AI is likely to come in that kind of latter half of the decade as comfort levels grow, as we've established our piece around the quality of data, that we have the traceability, that we understand the models behind it, that we make sure we have increased knowledge, increased expertise. Skills is always going to be there as well. So I think in terms of that, that will grow in the latter part. There's also this thing around job displacement and so that links to skills as well. A really good example with our drones and our roofing team is that we have re-skilled our roofers. There is no job displacement, there's an opportunity there to re-skill and then modernise. And in that, we've now had private households ask for that as a service. So that then offers broader opportunities. So I think definitely short term, it's going to be more pilot pieces of work and learning, establishing the comfort of governance and the boundaries and guardrails that we need. establishing the comfort of governance and the boundaries and guardrails that we need. And then the latter part is where you'll see that kind of wider transformation piece within AI, but also that balance of reskilling and upskilling and not the fear that AI is taking our jobs.
Well, when we redo this podcast in 2030, we can see, yeah, if AI is all taking our jobs, if I'm replaced by some robot doing a podcast in Swindon. So thank you very much, Sarah, for taking time today to talk to us about this. It's been extremely interesting. So thank you.
Thank you. And I look forward to seeing you in person in Swindon at the end of the decade.